Uba Sutter dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumus Lake Self Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslake selfstorage.com.
Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Item number three, the staff report mentions the fiscal year 2425. That is a mistake. It should be fiscal year 2526.
Is it item number three?
Correct on the consent. The community sponsors.
Oh, in the staff report?
Correct.
Okay, still noted. Um, let's see, do we have anyone who wishes to comment on the consent calendar or on any matter not posted on the agenda?
We do. At this time, we have Sammy Mendoza.
Welcome. Nice to see you. Thank you.
Hello? Can you, all right, we can hear me now. All right.
You've got three minutes. If you're real good, you get more if you're not.
Okay, awesome. I don't have, I don't have too much to say. Okay, so, um, I've been in and around Uba Sutter County for quite some time. I live in Uba City right now. Um, I'm an economist. I was, uh, I got my schooling at UC Davis. Um, ever since I graduated, I've been on a project locally trying to figure out an economic development program or economic development plan for the local region. Um, as of lately, I've noticed that there's an opening at the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Janelle is no longer manning the executive as executive director. So I'm really growing my relationships with the city councils, the Board of Supervisors, the local businesses, um, local organizations, just trying to let everyone, everyone know my intentions. Um, I'm looking to become the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce for both Uba and Sutter. Um, I went ahead and brought you guys my resume also. I have my cover letter right there, my resume, and in my plan, there's three copies of my, uh, I would love to meet you guys.
I'll make sure these are shared around.
Yeah, I would love to chat more, maybe some personal meetings as far as what we can do for Marysville and Uba City to grow our economy. Um, there's so many things that can be done. Uh, just in my long times in observation of our cities, of our counties, it is a beautiful opportunity for a project, and I would love to team up with the councils here and in Uba City to make it happen.
So I'm curious about your background at UC Davis. Do you have a degree in economics from UC Davis?
Absolutely. Yeah, I studied economics and I minored in political science.
They have a, UC Davis has a very highly regarded econ department. One of my colleagues on the Marysville High Golf Team back, back in the sixties, fellow named Evan Hillebrand, ended up getting a, his undergraduate in economics there and then later PhD, and became the leading expert in the Russian economy at the CIA.
Wonderful.
So that's, that's a fabulous, fabulous program.
They call our building the Death Star. So we learned, we learned from inside the Death Star.
And we're, I can converse as long as we're not talking about action we're going to take, can I? Thank you. I'll make sure. Anyway, um, so what makes you, I'm, I'm curious, what motivates you to want to work in this area with your background?
Well, you know, when I first started studying, I was at Uba College. I went to Uba College to get two years and then I transferred over to UC Davis. And one of the things about the scholarship that, that they gave me to go to UC Davis was would I bring it back to Uba, to Uba City, Marysville to integrate my knowledge here, to apply and grow our economy and our, and our business here, to bring it back. And one of the things that I've noticed since I've come back is a lot of our talent, they don't stay here. They end up just taking off to the city, going somewhere else where they're going to be better paid. So in my observations, I've seen one of my biggest parts of my plan for the Chamber of Commerce as well is to keep our talent, to nurture our talent while we have them here, send them off to university, but also make it really attractive for them to stay here and pay taxes here, um, spend money here to build our, our, our community here. So that's really one of my, my passions. I just love the city. I came here in 2003 from Los Angeles, and I just love what we have here. And to see it grow and become something really beautiful for the future, as it once was the capital of California before the flood, um, I think that we have some, a really beautiful project on our hands here in, in Marysville and in Uba City.
What did you do in the Air Force?
I was an aircraft armament and munition system specialist. I worked on the B-1 Lancer in, uh, South Dakota, Ellsworth Air Force Base.
Sammy, I'm glad you're here, and I like your style. I'll make sure to share this with everybody here, okay?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you guys. I look forward to your support, and I look forward to working with you all as the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. God bless you guys. It's nice to meet you all.
Thank you. You got a good jersey on, too. Jeter. You, you gotta vote. Uh, Madam Clerk, anything else?
Um, no more speakers for the consent at this time.
Thank you. Okay, um, consent calendar is, uh, composed of items considered routine and therefore typically approved by a single motion unless a member of the council or the city manager wishes to withdraw it for separate consideration. What is the will of the council?
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Aye, and a second. All in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Got the vote. There we go. Okay, we'll now move to a public hearing on two items which are pretty much the same thing. One applies to refuse disposal charges and the other two, delinquent sewer charges. The first public hearing, let's see, you're supposed to bang the gavel when you open a public hearing, aren't you? This is a public hearing. And the first matter, um, on the public hearing agenda, uh, and the agenda is entitled Assessment of Leans of Delinquent Refuse Disposal Charges. And the recommendation is to pass a motion to conduct the noticed public hearing to receive comments on the proposed tax lien assessment, and to adopt a resolution to assess liens of delinquent refuse disposal charges against certain parcels to be placed on the Uba County Secured Assessment Roll for Fiscal Year 2526. This is basically delinquent refuse disposal charges, getting, going through this formality and then ending up as a lien on the property. Am I right?
Yes.
We have the best finance director right now. Would you please tell us what's going on?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, who isn't here, and council members. Tonight is the City of Marysville's annual public hearing to discuss delinquent Recology disposal charges. Each year, the City of Marysville assists Recology Uba Sutter with the collection of delinquent disposal charges. Per California Health and Safety Code, as well as the Marysville Municipal Code, the city is authorized to place liens on property for failure to remit payment for assessed charges. Notices to property owners for delinquent accounts have been mailed. However, the delinquencies are subject to change on a rolling basis. When an outstanding balance is paid prior to the August deadline, the delinquency will be removed from their account, um, and they will not be placed on the county tax roll. There are representatives from Recology to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, and this concludes my statement on this matter.
You'd linger there, please, for a moment. The, uh, time for public comment is now open. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We do. Um, Joey? I'm sorry, Joe.
Welcome.
Hello, everybody. I'm Joseph Farie from the Silver Dollar in Marysville, and, um, I just want to open up by stating that the Chamber of Commerce should hire this man. That was a wonderful job.
Makes a good impression, doesn't it?
It really, really, really made me feel good. All right. Um, I come to you tonight to plead with you on a public stage because I've exhausted my private channels, and I have refused to think that you care so little about my business that canceling meetings I've set and ignoring my questions has been done on purpose. On September 20, um, excuse me, on September 1st, 2021, I received a letter from Lauren Perkins citing that he purchased the area that my dumpsters for the restaurant, um, were on from the city and that I'd need to move my dumpsters so he could begin building on that location, which to date is still not been built on. Um, I immediately began working on a plan with Chief Sacks, a former Chief Sacks, on an alternate, alternate spot. We ended up moving the, uh, dumpsters about 100 yards east, um, from, from the, the, uh, prior spot where it is still sitting today. Um, over the past three years, I've had issues with the homeless and the transits that have been going through, uh, making a mess, vandalizing things, cutting my locks off when I've tried to stop them, uh, from going through there or other people coming in to throw things in it. Uh, but the biggest issue to date right now has been the public dumping and the use of my dumpsters by those in the neighborhood and, of course, by the public. It's just constantly used over and over again. It's constantly overflowing. I can't do anything about it. We're constantly cleaning the area right now. Um, and of course, that usually leads me to have to take unexpected trips to the dump to dump my stuff and causing expenses that just shouldn't be incurred. I've reached out about this problem to multiple city councilmen, uh, members privately. I've set meetings with Dan, uh, a few times that have been canceled multiple times and ultimately forgotten about. No offense to you, Dan, I know you're a busy guy. Um, I have spoken to Rego about it so many times, I can't even count it. Um, and I've also gone personally into City Hall to speak directly to Ellen, hoping that she might be able to spread the news to somebody who could do something to help me out. And, uh, all of it was for not nothing. You know, not one time has anybody attempted to rectify the situation at all with me. And I'm continuing to pay this bill for everybody else inside the area as well as for public dumping around my site, and I don't think it's fair at all. Um, as the city, you gladly bring newcomers and investors into my restaurant, building and building to show it off to, uh, prospective clients. Um, you gladly accept my taxes. You continue to ignore the issue that's important to me and then turn a blind eye as the lien comes up on agenda, knowing of my attempts at resolution over and over again. Um, I could pay this bill tomorrow like I have every year that it comes up in my continued attempt to try and get somebody to help me out with this situation, but I feel like paying it doesn't change anything, and the same problem continues to persist. I get no help from the city so far. Uh, my wife told me that a member of city council that chooses not to speak to me directly anymore, um, that to get things done, I needed to go on record at city council, and I find it absolutely absurd that I have to come up on this public podium just to get people to listen to me when I'm a taxpaying citizen and I feel like I have a, some sort of a relationship with each and every one of you, and I should be able to talk to you about this kind of stuff without avoiding a public burk. It just, it makes no, no sense to me. Um, I consider many of you my friends. Uh, most of you up there used to walk these streets and frequent the businesses in Marysville. You were elected because you were owners yourself, community leaders, and advocates for our future. You've chosen to publish my debt in a local newspaper. You've chosen to make this, this a public matter, but not attempting any resolution to this. And I don't think it's fair at all. This would be my last attempt at resolving this issue with you guys face to face. My next step will be the court of public opinion, and we both benefit from, both of us avoiding that. I don't want that at all. I'd much rather meet with somebody that can sit down with me and realistically come up with some sort of a resolution to this whole situation. Because right now, I'm looking at $8,000 to $10,000 that I'm in debt to, to Recology right now, and just on principle alone, it's tough for me to pay this. You guys all know how to reach me. Thank you so much for your time.
Joseph, you're, uh, respected, you're a respected businessman in this city, and, and I'm glad you're here with, uh, sharing, sharing the issue. So I heard all of the problems associated with being in that part of town and trying to protect, um, a, a trash disposal unit, dumpster.
Sure.
And so you, they break the locks and people dump it?
Yeah, so.
And so how, I'm trying to figure out how this ends up triggering a large, um, liability on the books from you to Recology. I didn't, I didn't hear that part.
Sure, no, no worries. Um, so I, I stopped paying the bill because I couldn't get anybody to reach out and have a conversation with me directly. Um, multiple attempts were made involving Rego in with a couple of.
Pardon me, I want to make sure I understand. So you stopped paying in order to get a response and some action on the underlying problem?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. Um, I have requested multiple times, and, and speaking with Rego a couple of times, uh, he mentioned that the city has allocated a number of disposal sites, uh, five, six yard, somewhere around there. Um, and I've requested to have one out there and just placed inside that area. So people that are coming, I, I have no problem paying for my own stuff, but I don't want to pay for everybody else that comes out and dumps their washers and their dryers and, you know, who knows what else has been inside there, as well as the issues with, I've, I've put three locks on it. Um, each time that I replace one of these locks, I've got to get the lock to Recology, and so it, I mean, it's more than just replacing a lock. It becomes a bigger issue. And so what I'm requesting is that the city put a five to six, uh, yard dumpster out there in the same area that mine is at. I will still continue having mine, but that way I can downsize to something that fits more my restaurant, rather than having to pay for a six yard dumpster that I have out there currently. Does that make sense to you?
No, I understand, I understand your request. I just don't know how, how that could be done. Brad, did you have something you want to say?
To the chair. Um, Joe, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. I know that it seems like ridiculous for him to stand up on and vent, but it is the way to make it public record. And we have not talked for quite some time. It is mostly my fault, but the deal is that this is the process that we have to go through to make this happen. I was unaware that you were even on this list. I read it. I didn't see your name on there, your business or anything of that sort. I totally get it, and, uh, I myself just paid a large chunk of money to stay off of this list a few weeks back for my business because I had a bookkeeper dilemma. Sorry that you're in the same position. Know that you share dumpster that's not quite on your property, and it's on somebody else's property. I know that you were talking to Chief Sacks about it quite some time ago. I never heard if there's a resolution or not. It is one of those things where we, as the body of the council, are up here to make decisions with information as presented to us by the staff. Sorry the staff has not been able to help you resolve this situation. It's kind of one of those things. I don't know if we're going to be able to come up with a solution tonight to fix it, and, uh, crack that just sucks. But it's a fact that it needs to be handled and addressed. I don't even know what your agreement may or may not have been with whoever owned the property prior. I guess it was Mr. Perkins that owned the property prior that said you had to move it. I'm not sure how you got through that whole process.
Yeah, I mean, it was a pretty crappy situation. You know, the city could have offered me an opportunity to purchase it, and so my garbage could stay on there, but instead they sold it to somebody else, which, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a totally different situation, but it left me without an area to, you know, have my disposal at and put me in a bad spot. So I understand that things aren't going to be taken care of tonight, but I would just like it on the agenda and something that we can move forward, and hopefully at this point, somebody can reach out to me and we can start actually making some.
This is the, the process, as much as it sucks. And I just want to say thank you for coming up and at least letting us know, and now it's on the record, it's public, and, uh, we will work with city staff to make sure we can come to some sort of resolution at some particular point. I'm not 100% sure what it's going to look like because it's not completely up to us. We make the decisions based upon the information they share with us.
Understood.
So I presume it's an infraction of some sort, kind of crime it might be of putting your garbage into somebody else's dumpster, but it was basically stealing services. So it's, it's a theft of services or something. Do you have, um, camera?
No, it's, it's, it's an adjacent property, and so it's not, it's not my apartment. Yeah, there's no camera.
Oh, 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 that's, that's the Lauren Perkins connection. Okay.
Correct.
Sure.
I could share something that might help a little bit with clarity. Um, so I have a perfect view of your dumpster, and there's also another residential dumpster that was also moved once the Perkinses purchased the redevelopment agency property that had all of the dumpsters. Apparently, there was some form of agreement a long time ago for a lot of the businesses to use an area that was an RDA property because it was the city-owned, and everyone put their dumpsters there. Once the Perkins purchased that RDA property, I think it was number 14, they wanted the dumpsters off. So unfortunately, Joe had to push his dumpster further east, further away, three lots further from his restaurant. And unfortunately, his restaurant doesn't have a location, uh, an area, several buildings in Chinatown don't have storage areas for large dumpsters. So we lost an opportunity to have enclosed gated dumpsters. Now they sit empty, don't they? That's unfortunate. If they were reconstructed, and where Joe's dumpster is, every night, people pull in and drop stuff off. Everyone uses your dumpster. Everybody. I'm, I'm not kidding. And so, um, and then, you know, the homeless recycling situation, it's a constant cleanup issue. We see it every day. There's no power there for him to plug in a, a camera. Let's just say everyone in the neighborhood uses it. So it should be enclosed, and we might want to talk about something like that for that community, the Chinatown community, in order to secure a lot of garbage cans in the area, um, just sort of a mini master plan for the Chinatown area and how to handle the garbage and, um, just cool it until then. But I see it every day, so I know exactly how you're feeling, and it's totally unfair. And years ago, Marysville really didn't take, take management over where people are putting their, their trash. Um, so I, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that it escalated to this, but I do see your, your, the situation firsthand.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Joe, maybe you can help me clarify something because I don't have the whole story. That former site that you used that was a redevelopment property that got sold out from underneath you, were there other businesses that used that same site for dumpster location?
No.
It was just you that used it right there? All right. Um, that answer, that man, I thank you for that answer. And again, thank you.
I mean, you have a whole site to where it had the gate that we were able to shut and lock every single night, and now they're just out in the open where anybody can go over and get them.
I may. Um, I'm asking the city manager a question, and I'm not commanding or suggesting. I'm just asking the question. Would it be possible to have someone go, and I, I know you, you have business and you just laid it out and needed to, have someone from the city go out and look at the situation firsthand and come back and give us a report? And I know you've, you've presented it, but.
Yes, that's.
The answer is yes.
That's the easiest question all day.
And it would not be on the, it would not be on the agenda for us to be able to solve this.
Okay.
But at, at least I'd like to have, and, and no offense to you or to you, Stuart, for, for your, um, sharing your impressions of what you've seen. I'd like an official city report on this problem because it's probably something that's not going to go away without some remediation.
It will likely not go away, and I will add, it is not a unique situation.
No.
To, to Joe's plight. Um, it's in every city, and in fact, I've driven through our alley here and found wash machines dumped by the dumpster. So I think it's, your problem is unique in the sense that the RDA property, uh, issue came up, but it's not unique in the sense that there's illegal dumping going on all of the time. Salvation Army sees a bunch of it. Uh, so we will take a look and see if we can come up with a solution for that community.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Clerk?
That is all the speakers for this agenda item.
Okay, time for public comment on this matter's closed. Um, but any comments or questions from the, uh, council on the matter on the agenda? And what is the will of the council? Listen to your steps. Are you asking for items four and five? On four, on four. On four only. I move to proof. We have a motion.
All second.
And second, and all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move to item number five on the posted agenda, Assessment of Leans of Delinquent Sewer Charges. Recommendation is to pass a motion to conduct the noticed public hearing to receive comments on the proposed tax lien assessment, and to adopt a resolution to assess liens of delinquent sewer disposal charges against those certain parcels to be placed on the Uba County Secured Assessment Roll for Fiscal Year 2526. Ms. Wong, please.
Good evening again. Um, tonight is the City of Marysville's annual public hearing to discuss delinquent sewer charges. Um, per California Health and Safety Code, as well as the Marysville Municipal Code, the city is authorized to place liens on property for failure to remit payment for assessed charges. The city contracts with utility, utility management services for utility billings and collections. Notices to property owners for delinquent accounts have been mailed, and however, the delinquencies are subject to change on a rolling basis. When an outstanding balance is paid prior to the August deadline, the delinquency will be removed from their account, and they will not be placed on the county's tax roll. As the sewer utility is an enterprise fund of the City of Marysville, there are 722 customers in delinquent status, which yields to approximately $215,000 in uncollected receivables. Based on historic data, about 100 to 200 of the delinquencies will be paid prior to the final list forwarded to the county by that August deadline. Um, thank you. This concludes the Finance Department's portion of this report. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Finance Director. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this matter?
We do not.
Okay, and time for public comment is open and closed. Nelson? What is the will of the council?
I move to prove.
All second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, we will, the public hearing time is closed. We'll now move to discussion and action calendar on the regular agenda. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public, not public hearings, are, are discussion and action items that will be acted on individually. Let's see, the first matter is item six on the agenda, Authorization to Retain Real Estate Brokerage Services for the City-Owned Packard Library Property. Recommendation is to pass a motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to, one, execute a contract with Mr. Ed Nelson of Marcus and Milichap to provide brokerage services to identify potential users or developers for the city-owned Packard Library property, with compensation not to exceed 6% of the final sales price or an agreed commission structure for lease or partnership proposals, and, two, direct staff to initiate a developer solicitation process and return to council with proposed criteria and strategy once council provides input on the preferred future uses of the property. And I think we're going to have a chance to talk about that tonight. Mr. Jim Shad?
I'm just going to give a brief introduction, and then Dan, uh, will, will present and, and then turn it over to Ed Nelson, who is here to represent Nelson, or Marcus and Milichap. As many of you know, uh, the city has engaged with, uh, the current owner of, of the Packard Library, and as of the 28th of this month, we will be the proud new owners of that property. With that, the city is not typically in the business of holding real estate, and we are now looking at what, uh, the future might be for that property. The, uh, staff's proposal is to do something similar to the, um, process we used for the B Street property, which Marcus and Milichap, uh, represented us as a broker on that.
Successfully used.
Yes. Uh, and we would also propose to do a, uh, RFQ to get interest in the property while Marcus and Milichap, uh, looks for potential suitors, so to speak. Um, I think one of the main differences with this property versus the B Street property is council had a fairly good idea of what we wanted for the B Street property. Here, I think we have less of an idea of what. Here, I think we have less of an idea of what we want to do with this property, and so, a lot of the discussion tonight, I imagine, will be related to what we want to see out of the property and, and give Ed and our staff some guidance on, on where to go with this. I believe Ed also has some thoughts as well, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Dan first.
Okay. Oh, Dan's going to introduce. Yeah, I'll introduce Ed. So, yes, as the city, good evening, Mayor and City Council, but just as the city manager mentioned, you know, we, this recommendation is to hire Ed Nelson from Marcus and Milchamp to market the property. We have had interest, and Ed's going to describe that interest tonight. Our intention tonight is for Ed actually to speak to you, maybe lead part of that or be part of the discussion that you lead about the potential uses for the property. So, Ed will stand here, and if there's any questions that you want to talk to him about, you know, from a marketing standpoint. I, I believe we're all familiar with the history of the, of Packard, so we won't go into those details today, but we can do that at a future date if you want to continue with some more of the historical part. But my job tonight is really to introduce Ed Nelson, who you all know, because we've worked with him closely with the B Street project, as you mentioned, and it is very successful. It's great to see it breaking ground right now. For anyone who hasn't been out there, you should see the, the dirt's moving, and, you know, this is all a result of, of your, you know, your goals that you wanted to have done, and then Ed's work to actually get, get it done. So, we're just excited to introduce Ed Nelson tonight. He has a short overview of the potential redevelopment for Packard, and then he has some other comments he's going to have tonight. So, Mr. Ed Nelson.
If I may, all that action on the B Street property, what it does is it lends credibility to all of those coming soon signs that we've been putting out. So, there's one in a row that's really working.
Well, thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Welcome, Mr. Nelson.
Appreciate it. I was excited when I got the phone call, honestly, about this, but obviously, we have a relationship already, as Dan had mentioned, and I think that the relationship went so well because of the process and going through the RFQ, RFP, and then development agreement, and I think that was ultimately what, you know, how we achieved what we achieved over there. So, I'm guessing you guys all agree with that, and everyone's pretty happy within the city, I would imagine, over that. But it's similar to what we want to do here, and, you know, when Dan came to me with this, I love these historic buildings, and I think the, one of the big things that I'd like to focus on is making sure that we do preserve the, you know, historical character of the Packard Building. It is very unique, and I think everyone in the city agrees with that, and it's something that we'd like to see not be vacant and be used, and, you know, I think going through the RFP and development agreement, you know, processes where we will accomplish what is going to be the best use. We have had some interest, just kind of without really marketing it, people, you know, potential hotels, other public uses, but I think, you know, it's one of those ones, Dan and I were talking, like, what do you think? Like, ideas? And I said, you know, we live in a time where people get pretty creative as far as, you know, things and ideas that they can come up with that I don't always think of, and I think if we put it out there, we will attract different ideas that we haven't even thought about. So, I mean, that's, those are my thoughts. Anything, Mr. Mayor?
Maybe I'll go first. Mr. Chair? Ed, I like, good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
Thanks for the work you did on the B Street project and the hotel and all that kind of stuff is phenomenal work there. Looking forward to seeing what you may hopefully bring to us this. I mean, I'd just like to make it clear that I'm not real interested in seeing the outside of the building changed too, too much.
I agree.
But it's kind of one of those things that, it is a very historical building, and it's got a lot of unique features inside, so I'm looking forward to seeing what any developer that you may find want to present on that, and I, I thank you for all the hard work you and our staff put into it last time project was together and look forward to this time. So, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Questions?
Mayor, we do have public comment as well.
Oh.
Oh, I'm Paul Judd, your, thank you.
One time I miss it.
One time I miss it.
Actually, it's not the one time.
So, we do have...
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on the matter?
We do, John. Come on up.
John, Mr. Nicoletti. Welcome, John.
Evening, council members, Mayor. I do have a history lesson, Dan. So, it's, it kind of goes with the theme of tonight's meeting. In 1855, there was a group called the Young Men's Literary and Scientific Association, and they figured out through the original water transfers in California and the original environmental laws in the United States, they needed a place to do research and to carve out a pathway for the next hundred years. So, that became the Packard Library. John Packard funded it himself, and with the agreement that the city would keep it open to a public access and as a public facility as a library, that happened clear up until the mid-'70s when they opened up a new facility, same name, and transferred all of the relics and the documents either to the museum or to the California room. So, there it sits, and they tried to do a bunch of TI work, 1970's vintage TI work, really janky looking today. None of it worked. That San Francisco investor left a few years later, and Janet Ziller and Friday Night Live ended up taking over the whole facility, and it operated for more than 25 years. So, this day has come, and I'm up here because as a Marysville resident, I'm concerned about the next hundred years. And are we going to keep with the spirit of what this building was built for? It's not a strip mall. It's, it's significant. It has a significant tie to the culture and the community that we serve, and it is still, with the Packard Library that's still open, one of the oldest remaining libraries west of Mississippi in United States history. So, it has, it has a legacy. I just want to mention on record that in the process of trying to find a successful conclusion for the future of this building, that we have met, the County of Yuba is interested in working with the Yuba County Office of Education. The County of Yuba wants to put resources and finance towards the restoration of the building. The Yuba County Office of Education is interested in moving staff from 14th Street into the building and then opening an adult education facility focused on literature and science, just like its original days. I do know the character of the CEO at Yuba County, and he will not impose. I want to just put it up here that if he's invited to have a conversation from the City of Marysville, he will gladly support, but he will not try to interfere with the jurisdiction and the, you know, the lead that Marysville has in this process. So, I know there's an awful lot of people in the community, and each of you have heard it, that have an interest in seeing this building be restored and, and see it go forward. There's a, there's a great story to tell for the next hundred years. So, I just wanted to be, let you know that's available. YCOE is interested today, and we could respond to the RFQ, but I think it should be an invite.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
If I may, you might be able to help me with this. First, I'll share, share my own impressions. I am, I, I join with the overwhelming majority of the citizens of this city in hoping that something can be done, that building is preserved and its glory goes on. It's not really wonderful right now, even on the outside, and I'm worried what I'm going to see when we get our tour of the inside. You say 1970's, yeah, okay. So, my concern on the downside is, is the building a net liability? Can it be brought to a reasonable level of performance by anyone for, within their budget discretion? I mean, ADA is little. I mean, I don't know what would need to be done, but I'm, I'm just worried. That's a worry. That said, I am glad that you're stepping up on this project with us. You have a, we have a great, a great experience with you, and if someone's liable to come along with an idea that we haven't even conceived.
That's what I'm hoping for.
It, it may be, and, and I don't care if it's public, off the tax records, if it's not, it hasn't been on the tax books for a long time. I don't care about that. But it has to be an organization with the resources to, well, no one's going to want to move in without doing something significant.
I agree. Yeah.
I mean, I'm looking at that, and I'm thinking at least mid-seven figures to make things right. At least mid-seven figure. And that may, that may not be daunting because it's a handsome structure, great location, and there's a lot of square footage. What I'm, what I'm thinking about is, as we work through various opportunities, what kind of time horizon do we put on, on this? For example, at what point do you say, "The hell with it, I'm walking away. This isn't going to happen"? Or, or, but you're, you're probably, I'm certain you're privy to the things that, the entreaties that John's talking about.
Oh, I 100% agree, and John, I've been coming through Marysville for years and big debt hunter myself, so, when I drive through Marysville, even having the old hotel burn down and those types of structures for years, I would always drive by and go, "I hope whatever happens on these projects, they stay original. The original look, that's how they should be." But I totally agree with you and support that idea.
Yeah, we, we lost the Bank of America building at the southeast corner of Third and D, and we don't want to lose a-grade building unless nobody wants it.
Yeah.
And it's going to sit there and decay, and fingers crossed that's not the outcome. What's your sense of the outlook based on what you're seeing, feeling, your own instincts on this right now?
You know, it's interesting times. I think everyone knows that with interest rates where they're at, construction costs, labor costs, everything. So, things, as you mentioned, as far as for how much money someone's going to have to put into that, it's probably going to be a pretty, pretty large number, and the market is slower right now, but there are deals happening. I think the only way we'll know on timing is by taking it out, doing the RFP, doing the RFQ, getting people interested, getting it out there and exposing it, which my firm can do. If, who, if anyone doesn't know about Marcus and Milchamp, we're a big national firm, and we get exposure. I've been doing commercial real estate for 21 years. I have a team of five guys that work for me, so we will definitely get it out there at local, national, all over the place, but it's probably going to be more of a local person that's going to be, you know, focused on this project. So, that's a very tough question as far as timing, because it's a unique project. It really is, and we don't know what the end project's going to be, but I think taking it out there and at least getting some ideas, we already have some ideas that we've received, but I think the more, the better, and then, you know, the public, and you guys make, make the decision.
Mr. City Manager, I presume our ongoing outlets for this will be simply keeping things clean, keeping the lawn mowed or down or what have you, and it might have to get cleaned out for, for presentation. Have you been in it?
I've been by it, yes. I have not been in it. I want to go in it.
Oh, good. Well, maybe, maybe we can go the same time you go.
I tried to hit Dan up, but I didn't know you guys had out of the keys yet, so.
Put Marjorie and I on the list, please. Put me on the list, and then figure, because the ongoing expenses, I presume, aren't going to be significant.
I don't think the maintenance fees will be too bad. There might be some energy costs. I think we're going to have to spend some money initially cleaning it out, as you said, but also securing the building more so than it is currently. Boarding it up better. You know, I would guess, you know, a couple thousand dollars a month at most.
Yeah, it's, it's the kind of thing where we could afford to be very patient. And, and then we'll see what happens. We'll see if we get, if something might happen next month.
You never know.
And something might not happen for a year.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we get a lot of sniffs, and you'll learn, I'm certain you're going to learn the approaches to take. Tough problem, tough problem. Fingers crossed something works out.
Neat project, though.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'm, Mr. Mayor, I, I, so I spent a lot of time on and in this library, and I had an idea. I shared it with Jim Shad, and he asked me to pull together some images, and of course, this was all very last minute. I think I sent them yesterday, and I believe you have some of those images? So, so, so that's...
Stuart's on the job.
So, there you go. That's sort of, oh, funny, you did take that. So, bottom line, mixed use infill, market rate, mixed use meaning residential with a small amount of commercial, 10% commercial, 90% residential, within residential market rate luxury, a percentage, a percentage maybe 25% of affordable housing. This building, in its Beaux-Arts style, done by a very famous architect who did a lot of residences, many homes look like this, actually, in the Beaux-Arts style. So, it can say anything. It can say library, it can say theater, but what it needs is something to really make it, make more bang for its buck, and it's a large parcel, and if you respectfully annex it with modern, modern workable architecture to embrace and enhance it, you could make it the main lobby, et cetera, for a lot of really cool housing and entertainment pavilions, little coffee shop here and there, and that's kind of what I drew kind of to scale. Oh, and these are examples of different modern buildings that were added to traditional. That's a bit much, but it is a thought, and I could just see Janet now saying, "What did you do?" So, but modern and traditional, these are four different high-rises in San Francisco that are modern buildings with the traditional buildings as their main anchor, and they've integrated them beautifully, including that church, but the, the big towers. So, and also hotels, the teen, the, the tax abilities are fantastic, but you can do residential hotel as well, so they could be someone's home. And, and part of, it could be boutique here and apartment there and condominium here. So, I found, I put in 10 units in the old, in the existing building, lofts and things, and then 14 large square footage units, not even considering studio-sized apartments, and that's just playing last night. That's all. I did that in like 30 minutes.
That style of architecture?
Yeah, yeah, you see it, so.
Not a whole lot.
Oh, and, and those rendering, those renderings are modern, but they can, you could do, you, you don't want to, you don't want to mock Beaux-Arts, you want to embellish it or compliment it. And actually, if anyone has a chance, look at the Avalon Theater in Grand Junction, Colorado. Perfect example. The scale and proportion of the old meets new is perfect. Avalon Theater, Grand Junction, Colorado. I forgot about that one. I should have submitted that picture.
Well, and I think it's a large lot, so there's a lot you could do with that, too.
When you add those new, modern buildings, and you follow those lines, you're looking at three floors and parking below, but you want to respect the old building so none of the light wells or windows are altered in any way, and you can see there are corridors and courtyards and a pedestrian ramp to get to the second floor.
Yeah.
So, the first floor, the lower level, which is unusable as your parking, and, you know, HVAC.
Yeah.
Oh, and unit storage.
Oh, Stuart.
Anyone have any ideas?
Are you going to buy it, Stuart?
Listen, I would do this, but it's a conflict of interest for me to be in office and do development in the City of Marysville at this time.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you do it for free.
That's not me.
I'm not that, I'm not that council person.
Mr. City Manager?
So, I think, just to reiterate what Stuart has portrayed, that the building is not overly functional for commercial or residential use, and what Stuart is proposing is perhaps adding some buildings to it. Another example, I don't particularly care for the architecture, but is it Grass Valley? The National has some buildings behind it.
Yes.
Which extended the functionality, added more rooms for the hotel, but the hotel is intact in its... is intact in its historical, historically preserved, beautiful bar and lobby. But simply, I, I think that might be a way to resolve the, the problems structurally, architecturally with the building and just not very practical in some senses for something other than a library. Thank you, Stuart.
To the Chair. Sir. Did you close this public comment or is this still open?
There was, there was no public comment.
We have one more.
Oh, we have one more? Oh, I thought, I didn't think we had another.
I think you raised your hand.
Oh, he snuck in. See, it wasn't my fault.
I'm good.
Just, but we have one more public comment. From an economist.
Just to inform the council, as far as this project right here, it's right up my alley. I would love to coordinate and create...
You've already asked for this, John. Now, just a minute.
To create a project, a, a project development plan for this building. I mean, it's, I think it's an ideal opportunity. I mean, we have so many historical buildings here that are waiting to be utilized. It's one of the things that I've been working on, just walking around town, trying to figure out how can we use our resources to just max out what we can bring into the city. So this is right up my alley. I would love to team up with Stuart and whoever else is passionate about it, work with Ed on it as well and just make something happen for our community. I see that as an awesome opportunity to preserve a super historical building and really make it a place to just kind of hang out and, and learn and, and teach and just maybe just get the, the political family in there using the, the building and bringing in cash at the same time. So just saying, as I begin my tenure at the Chamber of Commerce, I would really love to make this happen with you guys.
Sammy, you're great. Thank you.
It's great.
I, I had not thought, let me, let me make sure I understand your concept there. You're, you're saying, take the, the library as a central feature and build around it. You called them annexes, I think, annexes?
You called them annexes.
Annexes and have it be a focal point for something.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, so, so many cities in the 1980s passed regulations to save historic buildings that were unfunctional. They were always neoclassic. There are so many buildings in downtown San Francisco, the old building of a lobby of a bank, they were very grand with columns. Those are just lobbies now. They just gutted them, preserved the core, and, and made them the lobbies for these huge buildings that loom over them. Not as respectful as we would envision for our Packard Library, but you, you, you simply, you just respect the existing architecture, you carry the lines, and a developer would love to do that because it has all the parking it needs for the right tenant. And you're, you know, the commercial aspect is rental event space, a rooftop terrace. Who isn't going to want to rent for, for a party on a rooftop terrace? And these are the things that we've learned when we go to Washington DC and see the value of a building with a rooftop terrace. By the way, keeping it mixed use and having commercial aspects, the library aspect is still key, and learning and education is still key. It has an auditorium in it, and that auditorium could be, you know, it's on the third floor. So you'll have your existing elevator and the existing corridor, but you'll also have a new elevator system in the new corridor so that the auditorium could be used for social events, for education, et cetera, as well, or community events or what have you. And it too could have, we could continue with the education aspect, and the name library would still be in, in, in place.
Interesting.
You know, those should be ideas with sketchings and stuff that could even be added to the marketing.
Yes. And those renderings were done very quickly with very little, I don't have any paper left and I didn't have my sharpener.
You'd allow them to use those in your commercial endeavor?
Sure. I would do tighter, tighter drawings to scale also.
Awesome.
But that's, that's, for 62 years, I've been obsessed with that building, and I only want the best for it. I only want the best for it. And I mean, I kind of demand.
When we receive, when we receive the keys, we will invite all to view the interior.
Thank you, thank you.
To the Chair. I'm kind of with the City Manager since I've been on the council. I'm, I'm not about the city holding real, I don't think that's the market we should be. But this is an opportunity where we took it back, and I'm sure that every one of us, and I've heard from many citizens, that definitely could preserve that building. That's the heart of our city right now. So moving forward, I hope you bring somebody and bring them lots of cash. Thank you.
To the Chair. Sir. I too look forward to seeing what you might be able to collectively bring together after hearing some of our thoughts here. And I appreciate you and your firm working on this project. And for the record, I'd like to move to approve.
We've got a motion to approve. A second?
Second.
Looking seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the comments. John? Next matter is item number seven on the agenda, request for local augmentation funding. Ellis Lake Park Enhancement Project. I know why you're here. Clean California Cycle II, whatever that means. And the recommendation is to pass a motion to appropriate $1,200,000 in general funds to augment the existing $2,906,000 Clean California Cycle II grant for the Ellis Lake Park Enhancement Project, based on the revised project scope and public input that has been received over time. Oh, there you are. You were right here. Mr. Jim Shad?
So, this is another historic landmark for the community. Ellis Lake has been, since I've been here, a big focus. Five years ago, roughly, when I first got here, council was talking about what we do with Ellis Lake. And on the books, in our strategic planning, there was an item that said, "Develop a master plan for Ellis Lake." That could mean a lot of different things. But through discussions with council in the past, we came to the conclusion that we wanted to do two things with Ellis Lake. Address the water quality issues was one, and the other one was to address the green space around Ellis Lake and the deterioration of that property and, and bring it back to life, so to speak. We have done great work on the water quality, thanks to the Yuba Water Agency and a $300,000 grant. We've been treating the lake. I, I recall being in a meeting with the mayor, and he, he lives close by and said we were going to get murdered if we didn't do something about all of the algae growing on the lake. And so we started treating the lake and...
But murdered, not reelected.
We started treating the lake. We now have a company, Solitude Lake Management, that treats it on a regular basis and it's staying clean.
I, I want to compliment you, if I may, for a moment, Jim. I was mayor for maybe two weeks, and I'm in a meeting with the water agency and other folks, and there was a consulting group, and I'm certain they're good consultants, I just don't know that they're a good fit for this, and everything was incredibly expensive. And we'd love to be able to get Yuba River Water flowing through and out. That's very expensive. In the meantime, let's get the lake clean. I live right on that lake, and you can actually see down into the lake now. Before, water visibility was less than six inches, less than six inches, and you can see fairly deep into the lake now. And that didn't happen before, and it happened because of your management, what Public Works has been able to do, and the iterative process of figuring out what works. All for way less money for this level of, of improvement than was forecast by that group those years ago. So my compliments on that. And it does look a lot better. People are not, people don't come by and say, "It looks great," but they're not complaining either. And it's pleasing. Thank you.
And I would, I would give a lot of credit to our staff, but also our, one of our favorite consultants, Dan Bergman. He spent a lot of time working with some of these lake management companies to, to figure out a solution. And so, and Jason is the person in charge of it now, making sure that everything stays that way. So that leaves us with the, the green space around the lake. And so, at roughly the same time, we started looking for grant opportunities to fund the green space improvements. We, we applied for two State Park Proposition 68 grants, but were unsuccessful. We found this Clean California grant. It was kind of a, well, we might as well try that, and we were actually successful on that application and received $2.9 million to do a limited scope project. We knew it was not going to cover the entire lake. So we now had a grant in hand, but at the same time, we were working on a master plan for the lake. And I, I am very happy that we did this, but we did significant public input. We had a large meeting with 100 people at the Elks Lodge and got public input. The overwhelming desire around, desires around the lake were two things. We want to be, combined, we want to be able to walk around the lake on a safe, comfortable path and look at the water and have a pleasant sight when we look at the water. So we've addressed the water issue, but the path still isn't too great. The grant that we applied for with Clean California was for a roughly six-foot path on the east side of the lake, and I believe it also extended up on the east side of the north lake near the ball field. That would have required us to remove multiple trees, and it was only about a four to six-foot That is not what the community wanted. So stepping back, we, we looked at a few things and felt we needed to re-scope the grant. We, there were a few other things that happened, too, besides the constituent input. We were successful in getting a development agreement for the B Street property. And that's right across the lake, and we feel there's going to be some additional traffic imposed there. We were successful in our negotiations and had help from YAB and Blue Zones in settling with Caltrans, and they integrated a bike and ped facility all the way from roughly the high school down to 14th Street, which is adjacent to the lake. We, we also had, as Ed mentioned, construction escalation, a cost escalation, and so that's, that's a factor. So in the end, we looked at the project and we said, "We really need a wider path based on public input, near the water, not taking up green space and not removing any trees unnecessarily." And we wanted to connect that to the new bike, ped facilities at Vinnie Junction and provide a good access from the new B Street property, the hotel specifically, to the lake area and, and down to 9th Street. So in that process, we, we were struggling to figure out how to adjust this scope. We've had significant discussions with Caltrans, who is the administrator of this grant, and we have the ability to submit a revised scope focusing on that wider path on the east and north side of the lake. But the cost is significantly higher even after we've value engineered the project. The new project, which I, I suspect there will be some concerns, incorporates a concrete pier boardwalk system on part of the, the pathway from 14th Street to 9th. It, it is not a boardwalk system the entire lake, but where it is needed so that we don't take up that green space and remove trees. Ms. Lett is here to explain that. Hold on there. Let me finish my, my diatribe here. We've looked at multiple designs. This seems to be the most cost-efficient to get us from point A to B. There are some concerns about how we control the drifting garbage that might accumulate under those pier systems, and we intend to look at that. We also have been soliciting other funding sources to see if we can get some help with that. But currently, we, we do know we have $500,000 available from the insurance proceeds of the hotel, the Marysville Hotel, the Hotel Marysville. We will be receiving, working with the county, $275,000 to forego competing with them on future STIP funds, which we don't have projects ready for those STIP funds. And that would be to the tune of 275,000. The, the balance, which is roughly 414,000, would come out of our reserve. Our finance manager has, we hadn't appropriated this...
Pardon me, Jim. So these numbers are, are not, it seems to me they would already be included in the reserve, or at least the 500K would.
Yeah, they are included in the reserve, but they've just been recent, well, actually, the hotel proceeds are, but the 275 STIP is not.
That's what I was figuring. So the hotel proceeds are already in the reserve, but you're, you're just talking about earmarking certain sources to flow. Okay.
And I, Vanessa's looked at the numbers, and she has accounted for that during our budget process, a million of it, because I think the dollar amount changed. But it was not appropriated in that budget because we needed to have this discussion. That still leaves our reserve at the 38% that, roughly, that we were discussing in the budget process. So we, in order to move forward with the state and submit an amendment, which would include stating what the new project scope is and the additional funding, and requesting an extension because they, they are offering everybody an extension, we, we need to secure or, or at least promise them that we will complete the project using some identified funding. I do not suspect that anyone wants to forego the $3 million from the state, and we want to try and figure out how to make this project work. We are in the current process of doing an environmental study, which is required, as well as moving forward on, what level of design, 30%? 30% design? So we haven't...
You've had years. What the heck?
We haven't invested too much money in it yet, but we're getting to the point where we will, and we do need to solidify the design.
Question. You're 30% into the construction drawings, right?
No. I will invite Jesse up to explain where we're at with the design, and we have John Mallon on the phone. He's typically our, our cost guru, and if there are cost questions, he can answer those. And then we'll open up to questions.
So to discuss a little bit on the schedule item, we did do a...
Tell everybody who you are.
Oh, I'm Jesse Lett. I'm a landscape architect with Roach &amp; Campbell, and I'm the landscape architect consultant on the Ellis Lake project. I have been working on the Ellis Lake project for longer than Jim, and I, on and off, and this particular iteration of it, we did do the master planning process with the community that wrapped up in April, and since then, we have been looking at how to parse that process into what I would consider a phase one for the purposes of this grant funding. The initial commitments, as Jim mentioned, in the grant, didn't really align with where we in... mentioned, in the grant, didn't really align with where we ended up by the time the funding rolled around.
Could someone, could you, where does it, where does the project start and where does it end on the lake?
Absolutely. So, you, you went too fast. Okay, we'll get there in one moment. And just, just to wrap up the schedule component of this, we actually spent a really long time looking at how to break a phase out of it that aligned with the budget we had available. And we spent a lot of time and did a lot of, looking at a lot of alternatives for how we could do that. And this was sort of the best approach we could come up with. So, this is a little challenging visually because we colored the whole thing green, but the path would extend from the corner of 14th, thank you, in the northwest, across, right there, yeah, across 14th Street.
So, 14th and D.
Yeah, from 14th and D to 14th, all the way to the east corner. Yep, 14th and B, and then it goes down to 10th. And so, you can see here, it's graphically transitioning from the, how far is that? Is that what you asked?
Yeah, how, how far south does it go?
10th Street.
You mean 9th Street? 10th Street or 9th?
10th, because that's where the crosswalk is.
Oh, that's right. Okay, 10th. I get it. I get it.
And so, that provides that connectivity that we're looking for. Exactly. So, you can see how it comes out at that existing crosswalk, whereas the-
I get it. And this is how wide, the, the walkway is how wide?
So, the walkway is eight feet minimum where the boardwalk is because, because it comes in increments, it gets a little bit wider.
It needs to be wide. Right now, it's a conga line.
Yes.
My backyard backs right up to the lake and people, if they want to walk side by side, one of them's all about to fall into the lake and you have to be real friendly to get that close. So, it's a real, real struggle.
So, there's a few other components within the current design that are, what we had to do is our initial design included some elements that aligned with the grant goals. And we need to continue to align with those same goals, even though we're revising the scope somewhat. So, we are addressing the gazebo island by providing an updated pathway from the cul-de-sac and replacing the bridge and repouring that pathway so that it's accessible island. This also includes reseating the existing event lawn. And then we've discussed, we said improved gazebo here because we didn't want to commit that specifically to the grant team, but we're digging into exactly what's needed currently with some discussions around addressing event power. We also do have a small play element. You can see that just to the south. One more down on the peninsula, thank you. And that is three pieces of play equipment. This is-
Now, this is not part of the project we're funding right now.
This grant, this, this play equipment is. And the reason why is because we committed to play equipment in the initial grant application. And we had some initial meetings with the grantors to see how we could re-scope this. We didn't feel that this play equipment was a priority any longer, but they said because of the way it addresses some of their grant goals, they felt we had to keep it to get our scope of work revisions approved.
Got it.
And so, this would be three minimal pieces of play equipment. Essentially, it is a very small-scale playground that could be, that we intend to keep as is for now, but big picture, we wanted to expand the play area in a different way as part of that master planning process. And this would not be in conflict with that. And I do think it's worth noting that the initial design, all of the pathway ran through the middle of the green space because of the grades in that location, which is on the B Street side. Some of those are quite steep. And to get this wider accessible path, you would have to do significant grading and take out trees. And that was absolutely not what the community wanted. And so, the real challenge as a, like a design challenge was how do we get this path wide and accessible and minimize the impacts on the trees and minimize the amount of green space that's being impacted. And so, that's how we came. One of the many alternatives we looked at in the last few months was this concrete boardwalk system. And so, that's what we found to be the most affordable solution to the problem. Unfortunately, as Jim mentioned, it's not within the initial budget because a concrete path on grade is always going to be less expensive.
May I?
Please.
That deck is good-looking. It's like a pier.
Yeah, it is a lovely, thank you.
Really good-looking. Really a nice crisp line. View's going to get better.
To the Chair.
Sir.
Before we go too much into this, I know we got to open to public comment. And then I have questions for both Jessie and John.
You're first in line.
I will go first then.
Well, are, are we done with the presentation? Stay there, you're going to be questioned.
Yeah, I'm done with the-
We don't have any public comment.
Okay.
Signed up.
Okay. Proceed.
Thank you. So, Jessie, I appreciate all the hard work you guys did on this for years. And, and from the hip, change of plans and change orders and so forth and working with the funds that we got. I did share a little bit of concern I had with the, the piers. And I was wondering, since John's the money man, if you might be able to chime in, unless you can answer the question, is that I know that we decided to go with the piers on that side of the lake. My concern with that is, is water chop, wind, trash, things of that sort. And I don't want that to necessarily be a trash collection underneath there. If maybe somebody could share with me and/or the public, that what does the cost of between the, the pier option and an option that you showed us in your conceptual plan, I don't know when, in the past couple of years, of a concrete wall and I'd walk over that.
So, the, there's a couple of different alternatives that we analyzed. One was draining the lake. In an ideal world, we'd have enough funding to drain the lake, remove the banks, redo the banks further into the lake to give us enough land to build a path on. That's the dream. And we tried very, very hard to make that work and it, we just couldn't. The vertical wall was one of the bank options we looked at when we were looking at that approach. A vertical concrete wall requires access to construct-
Puddings.
-without water. And so, we couldn't pour a vertical concrete wall without draining the lake. We did discuss a driven vertical metal panel system. And that is something we looked at, but it also had a higher cost. And I had, I was trying to pull together some of these alternate costs to bring here, just so we could kind of go back. But we'd looked at these with slightly different versions of the scopes. So, I don't have that number with me today, but I don't know if John's had an opportunity to bring that up because it's his number to start with.
Thank you. If you're there, John, can you hear us?
We'll do it, Ed. We can do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, like, like Jess mentioned, we had looked at the, the different options, different, you know, variations of the plan. But we were running possibly about a million dollars more looking at like doing the sheet pile option or, or some of the other alternatives we were looking at. And the other really big factor with anything that involved draining the lake was, is draining the lake, you only want to do it once. And we're only doing, you know, a third of the perimeter of the lake with this project. And we didn't have the funds to, there's several areas on the west side of the lake, the more encroachment in to make the, the path work there. So, it would be, it would be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be feasible to drain the lake, just do this portion of the work and then come back at a future date and do the rest. But yeah, like I said, it was, we started looking at the sheet piles and it was between 700 and a million dollars more when we were looking at doing that for what we, what we have proposed of this plan. And to address, you know, some of the concerns-